Somebody stumped on the carpet.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Motion to go check out the lake.
All right, it's six oh two. Township planning commission meeting for October twenty fourth to quarter. First we will do roll call. Dave, I'm here. Jesse?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
John?
Here.
Casey is excused.
Except here.
Right, we have agenda here. I think we need to make motion to add an item.
We would just like to add height.
I don't know if I can do that. I have a quick interest, I don't know.
We'll make a motion to hear. See, we add that in new business?
Yeah.
Okay. Jesse wants to speak to board on a potential opportunity?
Sure.
That's what we're supposed to.
Yes.
You have motion to approve?
Motion to approve? An amendment to the agenda?
Support? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. And the meeting minutes from September twenty sixth. I'll make motion for the minutes, September twenty sixth. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? I think there's support. All right, it is six oh four and I will open up the first project comment for tonight. We have no public, why? That's a voice carries in here.
Wow.
I like that. I will close the public comment at six oh four. All right, no items for public hearing tonight. It'll be on the communications or a couple of things in our township board meeting minutes and the MSU extension email. And we'll move on to unfinished business. So this point, this is on the item one, that's you twenty three dash oh seven, SPR twenty three dash one three at eight thirty five east bar. We would like to hear from the applicant, I think there is some breaking news on this.
Breaking news. No. Yes, there's breaking news. I tried to go down to the county clerk to get my box combined, only to find out that Steve does that. So Steve's gonna combine my laws for me, just fill out the papers without that. I did put irrigation in, now I'm driving with the neighbor. It's all waxed out. I've got all the poles closed mark for her new site. We were gonna originally do like a margin twenty four feet, ends up being a hundred and eighty something feet. I'm gonna construct it for her, we're gonna split the cost. Neighbor's happy, I'm happy. That takes care of both of those. Pain, okay. I had a thing to put this. But it was requested.
Yep, so if we did. With this one, then we would just per the agreement? Is that enough to reference it that way or do we need to be specific?
I would have had a condition of a hundred and eighty feet of fence, because that's six foot all privacy fence. Yes. Okay, yeah, just with the condition of a hundred and eighty feet of, just what all privacy fences have along. But, I'm pretty fine.
And the irrigation has already been taken, we have to make that?
I would have had that in.
Okay.
And irrigation. There's dust.
All right, well, is there any conversation needed on this one?
That's all we need to, they're always talking about. Township applicants.
All right. Anyone want to tackle the motions?
A hundred eighty feet of six foot high. Privacy, that's privacy fence. And the irrigation for mitigating dust.
Dust control measures.
And then was there anything else?
I think that was it.
So we're approving, uh, special use and the other. Okay.
We can do them both together, correct?
Facts.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve SU twenty three dash zero seven and SPR twenty three dash thirteen. Contingent on the hundred eighty foot, a section of six foot high privacy fence and the irrigation to mitigate the dust.
Support?
Support.
All right, okay. Vote, vote here. Dave?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
And Cap?
Oh, it's actually, don't get the vote.
I love that. It's forward, congratulations.
Okay.
All right, that moves us to the parks recreation plans, just kind of where. We just worked Smith, filled out this, took this stuff out, it's no longer there.
Yeah. I'm looking to have a little back, take away, something there for sale. Those that's not the. The parks that we no longer own. Added the, uh. Added liquid additions, that's just. Township open, open space, natural area that's not. Currently using or organized by.
Is it at this point that we are, would make the motion to approve this, to go through the board then, is that what we're? Or is this just the?
No, so this is to look, just to look over the goals?
Apparently look over the goals and the action program, just to direct option staff with. But the draft, the goals and the action program, the. Really the part of the. Distraction things that go in, everything else is a community profile using that's this data. Things like that. Fifty pages of appendix as far. We just keep track while the grants that have been issued. Those with these were copied and pasted from the previous.
Okay, it's going to be the.
And then just changed up and made look better than. Without the ones.
Yeah, can we?
The parts we don't have. And also we don't serve any fans.
Sorry, what was that saying?
And also including the survey results.
Okay.
If there's anything you think survey results that. You think should be reflected in the goals or action plan? If we have a motion for interactive.
Steady the rules.
It's the very first page, section.
Oh wait, don't remember. Okay.
Yeah, you need to speak about.
Uh, change the form of percentage of our goals.
I know in the joint meeting that we had, we had several things on there that they listed that have been completed, are any of these things listed here completed? Like as far as like the short term projects or the long term projects, is there anything we have that? Need to identify as, are these all new projects that are?
These are a lot of these are things that. Some of these were in the previous one, and though the, and they're still on the radar right now, like another improved to, they boat launch. That's kind of just. Working through that, trying to use that as a test point for the other lakes, to see. Going through the process, so. You know how that would work. And. Now for a big old sports park, that's something Christie's working on, applying grants for. Working in there.
So those are gonna be affected by get additional grants or things for?
Yeah.
Patients we got.
Yeah, this whole plan is essentially for when we apply for grants, we'd say. It's in our. We're planning through and thinking through what we're gonna do with any funds we receive. And trying to keep these, you know, broad, totally things. Need to justify different things.
Stephen, who wrote this?
Me.
You?
Oh. He and then, before me, one into words, and I poured it out. My.
Yeah. Here, write it. I have a comment though.
Yeah.
Not, not throwing darts at you.
Oh, that's okay.
But. All these objectives sound more like plans.
Right, yeah, that's the. If they have a, if D and Mires a specific formula, they want to follow it and their parks and right planning, which is.
Okay, yeah.
And that is, you lay core of the general goal and the specific objective, that's how you want to. Probably to build that goal.
Gotcha.
First, uh, just a random question, this padley park. That is on the south shore of Westlake. Right where Wesley Drive makes a sharp. Okay, toward Sharks Herb. Yep, yep, that's it, yes. And then Triple Beach, I guess in Army, that's what it was called. Yeah. We don't get a little bit better, we tend to take this way. Yeah, I didn't know it was called that. Okay. Tire on West County. Once they use.
Is that something where like we include in the plan as like a map to show where they are?
Yeah, there will be a map.
Yeah. That would be something, someone asked me, they asked me where a park was out here and I, I was like. I'm not sure, I said turn left at the trees and, uh.
Which one would that be?
I don't remember which one it was.
Middle Lake?
Or Westlake? They mentioned a park, I had to go look it up, I was like.
Well, that was a one of ours.
So there's a few here that stumped me.
That's it, like everything I was gonna. If you have to review, we have to write in a plan when we review these or we review it just again in five years?
Yeah, okay. Review in five years.
So it's just a five year continuous?
Yeah. So it's in place at the beginning of twenty twenty time, the next five years. That's only if we want to apply for grants, come yet.
Do you have any, uh?
Do we? This is a tall task, Stephen, I have, I don't, I have sympathy for you, really. Input coming from so many different people. I would, um, offer some advice when it comes to these objectives. Don't over commit and make it tangible and measurable. Like things like monitor, update, provide, monitor, reestablish, those are things that. They can easily come back to say, or us, or whoever, and say, what was that, you know? Not sure. You know, it sounds good, but. I had to write plans and future life. Five business plans per year, I, it's coming back to me, I got hammered for those kinds of things that were ambiguous and. Sound good, but really?
So are we looking to, to debate any of this or have conversations or just?
It looks like a lot of work.
That this is the direction we're going, that we just go with it, is that all we basically?
The direction you'd like to go.
Okay.
If you'd direct, uh, direct us to move forward.
Okay.
If you'd like to go a different direction. You could. Specify any changes you wanna see and then. Direct to move forward in that regard.
Do you have a timeline, Wendy, would like to have this all buttoned down?
Probably. It's November twelfth, I would like to have the final draft. The draft.
Anyone have anything in here that they see that? Doesn't look like what they're looking for or this is a good place to start, we can send it forward as. If the board just have some input, because they could have some input on this too, correct?
They could.
I don't know if they will.
They, they probably won't. That's not. Take that to the planning commission. I know in regards to the action program, I was looking through it and. I know the action items are.
Yeah, I think we're.
Followed through with the previous plan, maybe, no, this isn't like the master plan where there's, you know, potential legal repercussions for not following through with plan this.
Yeah. I think we're on the right track with section G, action program, those, if you listed short term projects, those are great, those are actions. But I, I think that's good. If you want to debate, you know, nitpick, that they better go to section G, you know? That's where the. That's where the work is.
There's a lot of work being planned for, um. You know, upgrading Twin Lake Cemetery and. Others. Really working on putting a lot of work into there. Updating that, making sure everything's.
This will be a public document.
Yes.
So, yeah, probably, you know, I'm sure you're thinking about keeping it in the context of. Marie and Joe's citizen reading, what my township's going to do. For parks and recreation as opposed to your boss. Yeah.
Seeing this is pretty much. Cleaned up from what we had at the original. That's, to me, it seems like it's on the right direction again. Okay, there's anyone has any? Conditions or we? Want to? To continue down this, maybe this is a starting point? Is that what you're just looking for, is to say this is the document we wanna start with and?
Yeah, just move forward in this direction, about their items that.
Oh, yeah, we have one more thing, Stephen is under section F goal one, says grow. Tell us what you, what. What we're going to grow. Our acreage, recreational opportunities, or whatever that is. Some people would just cut to the chase and.
Yeah, just grow. As a community, there are more park recreation. For opportunity.
For recreation.
Maybe not from size, but probably quality.
Yeah.
But it could, it's like the last time when someone had some property they had and then they, they were gonna apply for a grant to purchase it, and if they did, they were gonna do something with it, so it could, it could be growth. That, but it's more.
Could be, you're right.
That's right, that's right.
It's written, I know, opportunities to, if you could.
Yeah, I essentially just took the four. Four goals that were there and kind of attached, just a, a fee to them, there's the one thing that kind of sums up. What, what the heart of the goal is. Usually by preserving efficient open space and facilities you're growing. The growth item and then improving quality is enhancing.
So there's an increase in available.
Yeah.
Recreational. Stuff.
Yeah. And there's a better word. I switch that out.
So is there currently property that the township's interested in acquiring next to one of the parks? Or is that just a?
Not currently. It's also one of those things where, you know, with the equestrian natural area, there's a few, a few lots that are. In there, they have a tax default, had. You get those from the county and we.
Okay.
Have the opportunity to.
Yeah.
Purchase those from the county for. I believe, whatever. If tax was, otherwise they would sell at auction. And that's really the only case.
Yeah, that's.
And which I think of award would fit there or something like that.
Opportunities.
Buying this property with it.
Then.
With any existing.
Yep.
Just counted on the township property.
Anyone? Any feeling of that?
Anyone feel we're not heading, let's put it that way, does anyone feel this is a direction we would like to continue on if you have in front of us? Turns even loose on that?
Anyone?
It's fine. I have a recreational question.
Yeah.
This is very specific. Would or has the township ever, like, sponsored the haunted house, stuff like that? Like they're having at the. Twin Lake Park, I think this is about third, fourth year in a row, but I just, I just heard it made it. You know, fire department could help and whatever, citizens could volunteer.
Yeah, I haven't lived for long enough to. Oh. No, that's a, um, a county park, so. I know, that's also another thing to accommodate for in the plans, they switched to a pay model. Uh, so it's pay entry.
Yeah.
People are using.
I'll take, I'll take that up as a later date, but. Stuff like that.
Yeah, something the county runs.
Fireworks committee has jumped on that to utilize that as an additional fundraiser. So, you know, maybe that'll. Stick for more years, but I, I just thought about things like that.
What is this scatter garden?
Then it's more scattering ashes. People, it's not new. That's also new, new burial things people are starting to do.
Yeah.
That and also group burials.
It's a big burial.
Let's basically, there's. No, uh, no preserved earth, no formaldehyde is used on the body, and I agree it's a biodegradable cat set.
Oh.
That's just a little extra, I believe they have to go back. A couple years later and put in more dirt where the body decomposes, but.
Mm-hmm.
It's not.
Right.
Not the cat set, it's not.
Better go. Gotcha, no, I haven't heard of that.
I just got a warm up there. And it makes way for.
That's about.
Kind of one last.
Sure, I'm good.
Do like that.
So like, so like they have to like, I mean, you like have a funeral and stuff, like within twenty four hours where he starts smelling too bad and reburial or what?
I guess so, yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure, I don't. Again.
I'm just trying to make sure.
You get back to some dry ice spaghetti.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know, yeah, like, surely, they don't use. Freemation, that'll happen pretty quickly. They don't use the formaldehyde or whatever, get yourself to.
You don't wanna die in the summer, you wanna be in the winter and the fall.
They have to, you know, really quick.
If we feel this is the direction we would like Stephen to keep going, I guess we just take a vote on it and say, carry on, is that adequate?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, we would like Stephen to continue with the plan and keep moving forward here, uh, take a vote on that.
Can I ask one more question for Stephen?
Yeah.
Stephen, are there dollar amounts assigned to these actions that the public would? Be able to see?
There are not. That's something I could, I could ask for it. About how much it costs.
Sure, question.
The previous one didn't have dollar amounts.
Yeah, asterisk, estimate, estimates only.
Maybe one of our benefactors would see something, go, hey, I'd like that, I could give you the money for that.
Yeah.
You know, maybe you get some generate.
Yeah.
Somebody that might have a passion.
Give him a little stone or name on that. Yeah. What about, um, I don't know, Simbada, or maybe the last five year one, wait for Dave, but. Setting up a small parks and rec committee.
That is out of plan, I do think that'd be similar. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of the.
It was like.
Same goals from last time.
You know, even if something's small, not only if you had to have a certain number, but, you know, if you had three, four people.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Especially the bike trails, stuff, maybe, you know, you wanna have some. There's a lot of retired teachers around here. That maybe met. Like good. Monthly, quarterly, whatever. I think a little more that stuff like that, because right now, like, nobody does it, right? They do, you have to do. Satisfy the state, nobody's like really focused on it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Main sky goes, most of the grass, does this, does that. That's a very good point. And nobody's like really like on it, like, hey, let's get this grant, stick on it, like this, you know, and like.
Yeah.
We do a little bit, board does a little bit, supervisor does a little bit, everybody does a little bit, nobody really. Yeah, make that committee drive these objectives.
Christie, since I've been here, it's starting to really get the. The grants. That.
Right.
About these scaled out among the different departments.
Right.
So I think.
How, we could put a recommendation in there or ask you to put a recommendation to look at?
Yeah, so yes, I mean, this is looking at, I just think that's a, a roster, but we establish that still date regular meetings and parks and recreation adventure committee.
Right.
It's paying. And that's the action program as well.
That's your, like, number one. That's a very good point. To actually. Get some stuff rolling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so it might be a parks and rec that many more problems in the plan.
Definitely, it's just to get something together before he's done.
Yeah.
I would just make, yeah, it's my fault.
Maybe it's not a planning commission.
The group, well, it'd be more focused, you know, I mean.
They would be, had more hands on, they would know more.
I'd ask my help with funding if they were actually.
I think it was, at the time, you guys, there's all kinds of stuff out there, you just gotta jump through the little roots and fill out the forms and talk to fourteen people.
I wonder if there might be any more villages.
All right, with those additions there, would, uh, just take a general vote or do we have to make a motion to take a vote?
General vote.
Okay. I, okay, so.
This is saying, yes, you can. You can put it up by the politician.
Okay. Just a general one? Or do you want to buy a member?
You can just general.
Okay, all right, those in favor of having Stephen continue on the path we're on with the additions we made tonight, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Bring on. All right, we're, we are up to some last item, we have a new business, Jesse, what do you think of the business here?
Sure.
Yeah, sorry, you guys, most people have already, basically just wanted to kind of gauge interest, kind of thought that I had. For future planning for our company, I guess, that would be to. Purchase approximately, if the board is putting it up for bids, purchase approximately thirty or forty eight. At the township currently owns where the transfer station is, southern three quarters of it. Because roughly the northern quarter is the transfer station, then the old landfill sits directly. East of the old transfer station, kind of where they out, where they pile the brush and all that good stuff, it's the old landfill out there, right? So I brought this up to Joplink a month ago or so, and the thought would be that we would relocate, the construction company relocate the shop, the yard area, the concrete crushing, everything in the pit. Over to that property down the road, maybe fifteen, twenty, twenty five years from now, don't know exactly. With the end vision being where a current shop is, be able to utilize that for like a small marina, boat storage. Maybe a boat mechanic shop, I don't know, because the once lakefront property's developed, you know, you might have, I don't know, hundred houses around there. Something like that, so I can see something like that. Be a need for something like that, it would just kind of fit over there, so. Ask Jeff about it, he's like, yeah, just, just ask people, whatever, you know, so I don't have anything formal, I don't have a map drawn, it's nothing exact. I'm just kind of wanting to gauge interest and do the same thing with the board, I'm just gonna do it for and say, if you guys wouldn't be interested in it, then, then I would try to move forward with. You know, kind of for a bid, things like that, but I like to do things. Do some pre-planning stuff, I guess, to know, you know, if, if the planning commission says, no way, we wouldn't wanna do that for whatever reason. We're not gonna prove especially used to crush concrete there, like you do there, or, or grind wood, or whatever, and there's no sense doing it, right? They just kind of feel it out, hey, does that sound like a good idea or not? You know, it's just kind of the way we voice, some things, just kind of just feel it out ahead of time and say, does this make sense or does not make sense? You know, and it might help more with a map, like, you know, shows, you know, current lake plan and what this could, what they could do. You know, it's just that the current lake plan, they don't come as far west as they could, because they're leaving their current operation alone. And in my mind, I'm like, I can relocate that to the south, F mile, and make this that much more bigger lake, as long as we're making one, make it bigger. That's just kind of the thought. I don't have any plans done, nothing like that, because it's just a vision at this point. I just throw it out there and see what people think.
Makes sense.
And we don't have any maps here anymore.
I think it's a good idea, it's probably a good idea to start early, not to set a precedent, but. Drawing, you know, this is what we talked about in twenty three and.
Yeah.
It's now forty two or whatever.
And it's something, you know, I mean, if I, if I'm gonna move forward now, I'll get moving on it, you know, I don't wanna just get moving on it so it's set up and done.
Yeah.
For the future generations, you know, like, I mean, if I'm gonna run the show forever, ten years, somebody else's, I'm gonna back up a little bit, you know, but. It'd be something, say, hey, this is the plan, ten years, fifteen, twenty, this is what you're doing. Or maybe that doesn't work, maybe we'll go north half of that, I don't know. It just seems to fit in my mind, I guess. There's just this blank property sitting there with telephone or the power lines running through it that wouldn't affect what we do, I mean, as long as they have. Says access and whatnot, you know, it seems like it would be a good fit, because it's like where it's at now.
If, if the plan is to go like to housing around there, like you had mentioned, it's gonna go to R one, or it has to be something around there, and you would, then on that, it would still fit the plan. Because you'd have, Nugent would still be there, you, you'd be just up against that, correct?
So it wouldn't be, I mean, the, the east line would be up against Nugent, so yeah.
Yeah.
South line is a house down there, north, you have the transfer station, across the streets, Campere.
Yeah.
Yeah, that states how power lines just slice right through that.
It does, but it wouldn't affect. What we would use it for, I guess, you know, for, for yard area, for this, for that, I mean, they just need access.
That's the right way for that power line, you know?
What they have for an easement through there, I honestly don't know, I haven't, it's probably a hundred foot or something.
Nugent's not gonna be there forever.
Not forever.
No.
No.
They indicated to Dave and I that they, they want us to have a plan.
It's hard to say really how things are gonna come together exactly, I guess, you know, I don't, I don't really know exactly, I mean. They have, I mean, more than likely, nothing will get developed until they're all done, gone, more than likely. But I, I don't know how far they're gonna try to keep going east and north. And keep like leapfrogging material back and that, I don't know, there's all kinds of.
I mean, using what they did out at their other site, they, they ended up using that after they did all that, they ended up, it was so big, they actually made it into the park. So that was kind of a nice thing, you know, you have that as even part of it, do you know for sure what they're gonna do at the end? I mean, it makes sense, if you're gonna do homes there, that's, that fits what we are, and you know, the Dalton. Township plan pretty much.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't know exactly, you know, I mean, maybe homes aren't part of it, maybe a campground aren't part of it, what's the band? I don't, I just know that I wanna make it, as long as I can, I'm gonna make this sort of thing that I want that lake to stay pristine forever. So I don't read all the rules, so my kids can't go do like fifty foot wide lots or something, you know, I don't want, I don't want that, you know?
Yeah.
Someday, they'll, they'll touch that too, but, you know. And you know, so then maybe incorporate a park, I don't know, it's, it's still right on the road, you know, maybe, maybe it's some housing, a campground, a park.
It sounds like the right idea, I mean, you're on the, you're on the right path with, I mean, it sounds like something that would be very feasible and be something that would fit exactly where.
Yeah, I'm just looking down the road, you know, saying, hey, I mean, could make the lake a little bigger, shop over there.
If those were buildable lots today, it'd probably sell very well.
Oh, yeah.
And you're just talking about keeping transition, okay?
Correct, yeah, not, not.
You're just getting, you're just getting a movement up.
I'm just saying roughly by and south.
Okay.
If the board would, you know, the board's gonna be interested, so, you know, put it up for bid, all that good stuff. And then, you know, I'd have to make, you know, a math and all this stuff and figure out exactly what it is, but I would just rough speak and just for easy numbers.
Yeah.
You know, right now, it's a perfect thirteen, twenty by thirteen, twenty, forty, right? So from Michelinda, I mean, the actual transfer station used is probably only, I would, I would guess about two hundred feet south. And if you left, you know, ten acres would be three thirty, right? So. Usually three thirty on Russell by thirteen, twenty D, that would pretty much make more than, plenty of room for the transfer station, a hundred feet more than they're used and plus. The old landfill area, that's, nobody wants that. So like the southern thirty of that four acres.
Yeah.
You know, it's woods, power link, cut. That's all, just throwing it out there, just the. Age of just, or they ponder a little bit.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see how that would, that would look, that would layout, yeah.
Yeah, I could go with that for it. It is, it's like, I don't know, I'm not real, I'm not real. You know, it, because I'm, you know, I mean, to, to come, to follow the other in mind, right, you gotta go to the board, have them put the property up for bid, if they wanna sell it. Buy your the property and then come here for special use for this, special use for that, to have, to have it transcribed and all that construction. But then the special uses don't take effect, I mean, you gotta use it, so I guess the special uses wouldn't even.
Two years.
Wouldn't even come in front of you guys, I'm not talking about doing this in two years, I'm talking about fifteen years. So I guess the special uses wouldn't come.
But the first thing would be to get the property and.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I would just, I would just try to get that acquired and done so we had it and had a plan and going forward, but I guess it wouldn't be a special usage, because we wouldn't be using it anyways. Yeah, future. Just now, I'm thinking about it. You know what I mean, because I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be using it right away.
Yeah.
But, but again, too, I mean, it's something maybe when the transfer thing comes up.
Yeah.
Have you, have you, they're throwing lakes in there, that's, that's what so far is happening.
Like a mining reclamation.
I mean, I don't know if it would go all the way to the end and then you'd look at the rezoning, or would it be something you'd do along as, as pieces?
Probably, I haven't seen it, it's that, and if nobody know, I mean, you can't put your finger on it, I mean, they might close up their doors tomorrow.
Yeah.
I don't know. You know, in five years, maybe Fountain River Stand is completely replaced with some orange article. You know, and that stuff happens, I mean, we have no idea. I know.
Okay. Excellent.
All right, we have completed the agenda for tonight, if someone would like a motion for German. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Thank you, guys.
I think we're going to get that first part.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know, I, I've always, I've always found that, I'm doing a real fast channel and everything with everybody, you know, and it's pretty easy.